Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Ethan Collier and I'll be chairing today's meeting of the Chattanooga Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission. Couple things to go over before we get started. Planning Commission's received this packet in the mail a little over a week ago and they've had the opportunity to review it in advance of today's meeting. So at times during the meeting, we will move really quickly without hearing a staff update or something along those lines. So make sure to have a copy of the agenda there in front of you and follow along closely so that you know where we're at on the agenda. In each case, as we get to it, what I'll do is I'll read off the case number and the address for that case. And if you're here and you want to speak in regards to that case, either with some concerns or in opposition to that case, please make sure that when I ask if there's any opposition here in reference to that case, make sure you raise your hand so that I can see. What we'll do then is we'll slow down the meeting for a period of time. We'll hear the staff presentation first. We'll then hear from the applicant. And if you're here in opposition, you want to speak, after we've heard from the applicant, you can come up to the mic. Make sure when you come up to the mic that you state your name and address for the record. It's helpful if everybody who wants to speak in opposition, if you'll just go ahead and get out of your chairs and line up over here on the right side of the room. I can see then how many people want to speak. The total time allotted for opposition is nine minutes. And so from time to time, there are 15 or 16 people that want to speak in opposition. And the only amount of time that we have is nine minutes. And so I'm then able to see that we have a problem. And also, from time to time, I'll have to cut people off because, you know, there's a long line of people behind them that also want to speak in regards to the case. One thing I will say, if you're here in opposition or with questions or concerns or something along those lines, and you have the opportunity to speak, make sure that what you're telling us is something that we haven't already heard. That's most helpful to Planning Commission. Sometimes what happens is somebody will come up to the microphone and they'll say a number of things, and they'll use about two or three minutes to say that. And the very next person will come up and they'll say the exact same things. And then the next person, and that isn't necessarily most helpful to Planning Commission. What's helpful is if those comments are things that we haven't already previously heard. After we've heard from opposition, opposition will take their seat. The applicant will come back up to the microphone and they'll have two minutes to respond to what it is that they've heard from opposition and answer any questions that Planning Commission has for them. All the conversation that happens today will be between the person at the podium and the Planning Commission. So if you're there and you have a question, make sure to direct that question to the Planning Commission. If you want to make a statement, make your statement, but address the Planning Commission. With that, I'll jump into the agenda. One other thing, a lot of what we're going to do here today is making a recommendation either to the County Commission or the City Council. So make sure that you know when these will be before planning, before County Commission or City Council. They'll be sometime in March. So with that, we'll jump into the agenda. No, Mr. Schultz, there's a couple of things that we might need to address on the agenda before we jump in?
The only one I know of that is actually speaking into FERL is the first business under government mentor referrals, case MR 2025-31. I think they're asking, the applicant's asking, which is Hamlin County Highway Department, asking for a 30-day deferral on that case.
Oh, yes, that's right. So if you're here in regards to that case, which is, it's further down into our agenda, but it's a mandatory referral for Kelly's Ferry Road. That case is being deferred for 30 days. Or the applicant is requesting, the county's requesting that it be deferred for 30 days. And then was there, was there something else that was wrong that we were just talking about in regards to denial or something?
One of the MRs, case number three, MR 2025-19, it has denied, it's actually approved. It's approved in your staff report, but the agenda says deny.
Which, where is that in our agenda?
Number three, under new business, it's MR 2025-19, 500 block of Florida Avenue.
Okay, that's approved. Thank you. All right. First case on our agenda, anything else, Mr. Schultz?
No, nothing aware of.
First, first case on our agenda is HCSD-24-39. This is a preliminary plat at Chestnut Heights. It's lots one through 305 and located at 3120 Bill Jones Road. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Who's taking minutes today?
We got a recording. Sandra is in jury duty.
Okay.
And the meeting's live streamed as well.
Yeah, Mr. Payne recused himself. Item two on our agenda is HCSD-24-42. This preliminary plat with a staff recommendation to approve. It's located at the sanctuary at Signal Face Two, lots nine through 12 and 52 and 53, Signal Forest Drive. And staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda is item three. It's HCSD-24-43. And this is preliminary plat. The farm's at Creekside Planned Unit Development, lot 63 through 125, 900 and 901. This is Zero Mayfly Road. Staff is recommended to defer for 30 days. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? All right. And you've got a recommendation to defer for 30 days. You want it. We have a motion to defer for 30 days. And it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case is HCSD-24-44. And this is a preliminary plat. It's Brookstone Manor Plan Unit Development, lots one through 76, 1,001 through 1,003, located at 3132 Udo Wall Ringgold Road. Staff, staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case, item four is HCSD-24-45. And this is final plat for Urban Farms, lots one through 11, located at 10517 Lee Highway. Staff was recommended to defer for 30 days. Is there any opposition present? You're the applicant. And do you have an opinion on whether or not we defer it?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I can tell you the reason for the referrals. Groundwater protection, based on their notes for final plat review and approval, all the lots need to be staked out with wooden stake and painted broadly with lot numbers on each sides. So groundwater protection is not giving us a final say-so on septic tank use of these lots.
My name's Derek Blackwood. I'm with MAP Engineers. We're the engineers on the project. That, those items have been addressed. The only thing that groundwater protection, we're still waiting on from them is to go out and do a site review. These, these lots are big. We've got plenty of room for septic. So I would ask that if it would be the commission's will that you would recommend approve, subject to these items being addressed, so that we're not having to wait another month to move this forward. Because it's my understanding that any day is, is when groundwater is supposed to be out there at the site to do the site inspection.
Mr. Schultz, with a final plat, theoretically, we could approve the final plat. It will not be recorded until groundwater signs off on it?
That is correct.
Okay.
It will not be signed by groundwater if those lots don't meet the septic standards.
Okay, so every final plat we approve goes with a condition that groundwater be satisfied?
Not all the time.
I'm sorry?
Not every time, unless you all specifically state.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm confused as to why we would approve a final plat without clarity of whether all the rules and regulations have been met.
Well, I think what I'm talking about and what Mr. Payne's talking about is a final plat approved by this body doesn't allow them to record the final plat until all the regulations are approved. So it's not uncommon for this body to approve a final plat, even though certain requirements have not been met. That's actually probably most common. I would say most final plats we're approving have some aspect of them that isn't complete.
Yes, and we're looking at possibly, we're making some changes to the Hammond County subrags as well as the city. And oftentimes, when plats come from this body, they should be ready to be recorded today if this body approves them. That's not been the practice for many, many years. So to your point, that has been correct. Where this body approves the final plat, they've got three years to sign and get it recorded. That's been, that's been the previous process.
I guess my point is just that we're supposed to be reviewing it to see if all the criteria have been met to give final plat. So I guess my question still stands, why would we approve a final plat until all the conditions have been met?
All right. What's the will of the commission?
Motion to deny?
Well, the specific is to defer.
Okay, well, I'll change it to motion to defer for 30 days.
We have a motion and a second to defer for 30 days. Any discussion?
I would say, if I may, everything has been done. The roads are paved, ready to go. It's a private development. This is just the last bit of information. We'd really appreciate it if the commission would grant approval instead of having to wait another 30 days. Because like I said, I don't, I don't foresee this taking 30 days to get groundwater to sign off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
So I don't have a problem with going with the applicant's request and approving this. And I don't really know if we need to put the stipulations on. So that's, that's where I stand.
Okay. Any other discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Somebody count.
So yes is for a deferral and no will be against the deferral?
Yes. I recuse.
Oh. No's have it.
What's the will?
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Did anybody vote differently? Oh, you voted differently? Well, I mean, I know, did you vote differently according to the motion? Okay.
I again recuse myself.
Go ahead. I think Dan has.
Mr. Chairman, I was gonna say, I'm pretty sure the motion would carry. Do we need to do another roll call vote?
I'd do a roll call vote, just to be.
Mr. Payne?
So yes to be for approval?
I recuse.
Yes. Yes, passes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Reuters.
Mr. Chairman, I'm very confident that that vote and that this plat will be probably very successful subdivision. But the reason that we do wait until everything's, you know, we try to on every plat is because we, you have a final plat, it is possible to actually sell, sell property. And I have seen situations in the past, very rare, when folks have bought property and it didn't have everything they needed to get a permit. So I think that's why, that's why we're cautious.
Well, I, I hear that. But my understanding would be that they could not, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, they can't transact with a piece of property until the plat's recorded, not because this body approved it.
Absolutely. But I've seen things recorded that weren't legal. So I mean.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Ludford?
Brian, can we condition on final plats?
You could.
So maybe in the future, would staff consider those conditions be applied alongside the recommendation? That way we have some clarity on what you're saying.
We could. And again, I think when we bring these changes back for the body, this body in terms of Planning Commission, in terms of subrags, things will probably change on how that's handled. It may address a lot of that.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yes. Can you explain the timeline between submitting for final plat and getting groundwater out there? Like, how, how do those schedules run?
I can't speak with groundwater. But it's about 40-some days when they submit the plat to us. And groundwater's at the same, well, you'll see the next plat here in a second. You see a lot more denials and deferrals because groundwater protection has some issues. There's floodway issues that are coming up. You'll start seeing that more and more often now.
When does groundwater get notified?
Soon as the plats get submitted to us. And sometimes before that, it's up to the property owner.
The next case on the agenda is HCSD-24-46. And this is Dow Station Plan Unit Development, slots one through 54, 900 and 902, located at 7618 Middle Valley Road. Staff is recommended to deny the preliminary plat. Is there any opposition present? I'm assuming you're the applicant. And Mr. Schultz?
Sure. And basically, get to know some votes on this. And the reason for the denial of this plat, we received some information from the Hammond County Building Inspection Department, that the proposed floodway disturbance and FEMA reports provided are not sufficient for continued land disturbance. So that's why we're recommended to deny this preliminary plat. It's not in compliance with the adopted flood and floodway requirements.
Councilman Ludford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian, when did that information come in, in this process?
Uh, it's, we, we finalized the staff report for subdivision plats the day before this packet comes out to you guys in the mail. So 10 days ago.
Okay. So thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Yes.
Ian Blackmore, Pratt &amp; Associates. We'd just like to request a 30-day deferral to coordinate with staff. I can get into the details if needed, but it seems to just be a simple housekeeping confusion.
We have a motion to defer for 30 days. Has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda is HSDV-24-6. And this is a variance to Hammond County subdivision regulations on Newman Green Road. And staff is recommended to deny. Is there any opposition present? Okay, you're the applicant. Is there any opposition present? All right. Okay. Mr. Schultz?
Sure. This is a variance request, the Hammond County subdivision regulations for lots less than five acres on a private road or easement. In order to have a lot less than five acres, it has to front a public maintained county road. This does not. You can see, I believe this has already been deeded off. The applicant can probably correct me if I'm wrong. It's already been deeded off. So they can't get a building permit until a recorded subdivision plat has been submitted and approved. This is off Newman Green Road. Here's another view of that property. You can see this is a private easement coming back to this lot. Here's another view. The area in red is where the current property is located at. They're wishing to, I think, put a structure on that property. But that lot was deeded and doesn't front a public road. So they're asking for a variance on that. The review committee looked at this and felt it did not agree with the unusual physical hardships on the property to comply with the five acre rule. Wasn't clear if this parcel was deeded out by the court. If that was the case, the court or judge can rule it'd be subdivided. But we're not sure if that's the case on this property. So staff looked at this in conjunction with the Fire Marshal's Office and recommends to deny this request.
Yes, sir.
My name is Jonathan Macavina. I work for Clayton Homes of Hickson. Where the house is going to be going at is all family property. It is farmland. The main partial where the house is going at is the grandparents' property. There is the parents' house. That's going to be that driveway. I have a driveway easement with the grandparents and the parents. I've had a soil map done already on it. I have NIO survey coming out to do a survey on the property. I just think that it's all family land. I just don't see the issue with it.
Can, can they put more than two structures on that piece of property?
It's only going to be one structure on the property.
No, you couldn't. You, in order to put two structures on one lot in the county, it has to meet all the standards as if it was being subdivided. They could, in theory, potentially maybe do a flag lot. I don't know. There's other options possibly available. And this body, I would say this body in the past has approved similar requests for variances like this. Just looking at that lot, it seemed like it's big enough to get five acres in there. This body so chooses, they could grant the variance.
Mr. Maybe?
Mr. Schultz, how, how big is the lot that they, that they're trying to use here?
1.66 is the one that we're wanting to put the house on. The total lot is, I believe, right around like 20 acres?
So if we did a, did a variance, it would make it for a half acre lot or 0.66? Is that accurate?
Correct. That's correct. And staff looked at as a whole 20-something acres there. It looks like you could do the five acre to meet the standards, but. Flag lot, you have to have one acre in size, not counting the flagship.
Chairman, sir, have you just looked at the flag lot option?
Yes, I have looked at the flag lot option on it. The issue that we ran into is that the road frontage, where the parents' house is at, there wasn't enough road frontage in there to do a flag lot. That's why we decided to go with the driveway easement, because they were requesting 75 feet for a flag lot. That's why we went ahead and just did the driveway easement from the parents to where the house is going to be going.
And the reason for not hearing to five acres?
That was part of the grandparents' request, because right now, the property is under green belt. And they didn't want to fall under the issue where they would lose their green belt certification on the property.
That makes sense. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
That's Brian.
If there was a condition placed on the variance that would make sense to validate the variance, what, what, what would staff think of off the top of their head?
I don't know. It's hard to come up with a condition on the fly.
Well, the reason I'm going here, you know, for the eight years or so that I've been, I've always tried to think about families and families staying together and living on property, which I think is an absolutely wonderful thing. And I want to find a way to try to make this.
And I will say, continuing on my further conversation, as part of our sub break up, sub break update, we are looking, exploring options for situations like this, where you wouldn't be held to five acre rule for situations. We don't have it in place today, but eventually, if this body so chooses, we'll have options for somebody to do this.
And I would dare say that even in, in, in the county, you're going to see more and more of this with the price of housing, with the, I mean, with the availability of housing of, I mean, you're lucky to have land and have your family on it. I think that, I'd be there. I'd be there. So again, I'll ask, is there a condition that would help defend this?
I don't know about a condition, but yeah, I think you heard from applicant today that the flag lot could be difficult in terms of frontage. At the bottom, it's family-owned property, something to that effect. And the green belt status as well.
I have also looked in doing the house towards the backside of the property. The only issue that we ran into is that there's a set of railroad tracks there that we cannot cross.
Hey, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the spirit of the rule is really that we don't want to subdivide land that won't have adequate access.
True, that's correct.
So to me, and maybe we can talk through the ramifications of this, but you're talking about a condition, as long as we condition that there's an access easement agreement, seems like would satisfy the, the spirit of the rule.
Which I have that with me as well, for the driveway easement.
And also just limit it to one. I mean, I think we've done this twice since I've been here. Y'all have given exceptions to this. I'd say just limit it to this one.
What would that, what would that language look like?
Limited to one.
Third time's a charm.
You want to make the motion?
Limited to one child and one house. Again.
So let's do this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this on the floor for approval. That's my motion. And see if we can get some conversation on, and a condition.
Mr. Anderson? Yeah, I'll second that amendment. We've all heard a motion amended a motion. And it's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next case is item seven on our agenda. It's SDP-24-57. And this is a preliminary plat at Euler Lane, lots one through 75, located at 200 Euler Lane. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. First item under new business is case 2025-0016. And this is located at 1723 Leggett Road. And it's an application to rezone from A1 to R5. And staff is recommended to deny the applicant's request and approve other. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? On case, we're, we're under the first item under new business, which is item one, case 2025-0016, located at 1723 Leggett Road. Is the applicant present?
And Mr. Chairman, clarify that. Other recommendation is to deny owning request, but approve a special permit for single lot.
What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve the staff recommendation. And it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case, item two is case 2025-0017. And this is located at 1907 Stewart Street. Staff is recommended to approve an applicant's request to rezone from RN-1-5 and IH-2TRN-3. Is there any opposition present? What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve. It has been properly seconded. Any discussion?
Brian, so the IH, Heavy Industrial is equivalent to our old M1?
Correct. Correct.
Correct. So we are moving obviously from a very um wild west open zone that would allow heavy industrials, so plants, smoke stacks and all that, back to a traditional or a neighborhood residential use.
That's correct. And if you look at that, man, on the zoning map, there's a large area of manufacturing zone setting there, uh, but a lot of it contains single family dwellings.
All right. Thank you very much.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on our agenda, item three is a mandatory referral, twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one nine. And this is for an unopened block of Florida Avenue Road, and uh staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four is case twenty twenty-five dash zero zero two zero, and this is located at twenty-eight hundred Curtis Street. Staff is recommended to approve a rezoning application from RN dash one dash five to, and, and IH to RN dash one dash three. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five on our agenda, this case twenty twenty-five dash zero zero two one, this is located at two hundred Market Street. Staff is recommended to deny an applicant's request for a rezoning from DSH dash six and DRA dash four to DCX dash fourteen. Is there any opposition present? All right. Fantastic. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we also received uh several emails and opposition as well, and you have a copy of that uh opposition in front of you.
Yes, thank you. And is the applicant present? All right. Thank you. Mr. Schultz.
Yes, this is in uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty-one. Uh, this is a request to rezone from DSH six and DRA four to DCX fourteen. Uh, proposed use is mixed use uh building up to twelve stories. It's a small piece of property. It's zero point two five acres in size. Uh, number of units is sixty. Uh, it's a density of two hundred forty dwellings per acre. You can see on the zoning map, uh, this is a closer view. Uh, this is just right across from Pockets. Uh, you can see there's no DCX near this piece of property. Uh, this site was rezoned from R four and M one to C three with no conditions in nineteen ninety-two. And then in twenty sixteen, this site was rezoned uh to form-based code. To the north of this property is a commercial parking lot. Uh, further north towards the river, uh, you see some more commercial uses. Uh, to the south is commercial. Uh, to the southeast is multi-unit residential, and to the southwest is a commercial parking lot. Here's a view of the site from uh Market Street. Uh, this is a view of the site from Second Street. And to the, to the uh left of that picture, you can see the townhomes that are budding this property. This is looking north, which is the vacant parking lot, and then commercial, retail and aquarium. This is east of the site, which is the townhomes. South of the site, parking lot, then you see uh behind that, another, another commercial establishment. Uh, this is west of the site, looking towards Broad Street and I twenty-seven. Uh, and see, it's a commercial parking lot and commercial uses. Uh, this property is in the downtown plan, which is adopted in two thousand and five. It's in the, uh, the plan recommends tourism, residential, retail and recreation for this site. Uh, this is aerial view, just trying to show you what kind of zones are near this property. Uh, you can see the site in question highlighted in the yellow box. Uh, to the north is DRM four, RR V four. Uh, to the east of the site is DRA four, and to, to the west is DSH four. And then, of course, up uh by the river, you have some civic zones that are all four stories. Um, there is really no tall zones, other, other than four stories in this general vicinity. Here's a further zoomed out view of the site. You can see the site highlighted in the red circle here. Uh, the closest taller zone, if you will, which is DCX uh fourteen, is about three blocks to the south, which have the red lines going to it. If you go farther south down by the uh East Tennessee, um, I mean, uh, TBA and the library, this yellow circle, uh, that's a zone that was rezoned to DCX twenty. And then over to the west in the bend, uh, we have a twenty-story building over there, as well as a Reka Foundry, which is just off this image. So the closest taller buildings are quite a ways away from this property. Uh, this side is surrounded by DSH and RA zones. Again, the closest DX uh zones with applicants requesting is five hundred and thirty-three feet to the south. The maximum building height at the DCX zone is eight stories, uh, which is the five hundred and thirty feet away. Uh, the applicant is requesting six additional stories for a max of fourteen stories. Uh, the development forum in this general location in the two hundred block of Market Street is urban with buildings built close to the street, with building heights ranging between one and two stories in height. Uh, the building heights along Aquarium Way range from three to five stories. So you can see in this general vicinity, nothing higher than uh potentially five stories. Again, the closest DCX fourteen zone is roughly thirteen hundred feet to the south of Market Street and East Fifth Street. Within the past five years, uh, there's been three rezonings that enable higher buildings in the form-based code area, as I mentioned earlier. Uh, twenty twenty-four, the Reka Foundry site, uh, that was rezoned from DCX eight to DCX twenty. Uh, in the staff report, it noted that the existing development forum uh matches more of the downtown context area, starting at the convention center and the Chattanooga Hotel, parking deck, and moving south towards the stadium, uh, and the first Horizon Pavilion. Those buildings are taller. The second site was the bend, uh, which is rezoned from uh BPK, BCX twelve and BCX twenty. However, that is the southwest of this site. There are no existing residential properties adjacent to this zone site. And then finally, as I mentioned earlier, uh, the property across from the downtown library, that was rezoned to DCX twenty. There are no existing properties adjacent to this own property. However, Patton, Patton Towers was close by. That's already zoned DCX twelve. So the pattern for those zones have been no residential and taller buildings nearby. This proposed site is zero point six nine acres in size. Again, this side of us, the DRA four zone, uh, which is a downtown residential attached zone. Uh, proposed zoning would increase the height to twelve stories. Uh, the proposed downtown context and fourteen-story building height is not compatible with adjacent development forum of the downtown plan. Uh, the heights are taller in the urban core and transition to lower heights closer to the river. This would be in violation of that policy. Uh, the proposed lot size is very small in a fourteen-story building with large mass building, uh, that was surrounding the site. So with all that information, uh, based on that review, uh, staff recommends to deny uh this request at this location.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Councilman Ludford. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian, are, does staff anticipate any variances associated with this?
Uh, you'd have to ask the applicant. I don't, I don't, you do, uh, you assume about modifications from form-based code. I'm not aware.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
All right. We'll hear from the applicant.
Good afternoon, Commission. My name is Abby Cook, and I'm with Cronus Capital. Cronus Capital is a private equity firm with holdings in a variety of industries, including fintech, international energy projects, franchising, fine art and real estate. Our founder and CEO, Nash Bowen, was born and raised in Chattanooga. And after much consideration, we as a team have chosen to headquarter Cronus Capital in the beautiful scenic city. Um, today, we're here to make an amended request um of the rezoning of two hundred Market Street from a DRA four, DSH six split zoning to a contiguous DCX six zoning. Um, as many of you all know, we originally intended to purchase both two hundred and two twelve Market Street and apply for the DCX fourteen zoning on both lots to accommodate our proposed development. Um, although we did receive mostly positive responses, um, our fellow Cherry Street neighbors understandably opposed the development because their view shed would be blocked by any high-rise development on two twelve Market Street, even at its current zoning of six stories, um, because the Cherry Street townhomes adjoin to the two twelve Market Street parcel. Um, and actually, in your packet, um, exhibit A shows the view shed comparison. Um, we've been very transparent from the get-go about our intention to build a long-term relationship with the Chattanooga community. It's very important to us. Um, and we also said that we would listen to the community's opinion on this building, um, and we did. Um, we actually took the initiative to cancel the two twelve Market Street contract and began developing a new plan to use the two hundred Market Street property in a manner that will still provide value to the Chattanooga community without unreasonably encumbering the Cherry Street neighbors' views, all while serving as a pilot project to build a foundation of trust between Cronus Capital and the city of Chattanooga. Um, in your packets, um, you'll see exhibit C, and that shows an aerial photo of the two hundred Market Street parcel. So the building side, which is on the bottom, is currently zoned DSH six, and then the grassy half on top is currently zoned DRA four. Um, so DRA four, as you guys know, um, the zoning requires a minimum lot width of fifty feet plus a five-foot setback. And we actually only have right at fifty feet in total width, meaning that legally, we cannot build on fifty percent of our parcel, um, which obviously significantly limits our ability to provide value um to the city with our proposed building. Um, full utilization of this commercial lot within the applicable guidelines will promote Chattanooga's economic growth, aid Chattanooga's urban planning goals by supporting dense mixed-use development rather than suburban sprawl. And it will generally assist in making this area of downtown Chattanooga, which is a vital, iconic and beautiful part of the city, revitalized, safe and thriving again. Um, in exhibit E, you will see currently, unfortunately, um, there is a homeless camp behind two twelve Market Street. Um, you'll also see photos of used narcotic needles on and around the property, which ultimately deters consumers from walking around there at night like they used to. Chattanoogaans widely consider the aquarium to be the staple of downtown, of Chattanooga's downtown, myself included. But the East Aquarium Way and Market Street blocks do not currently represent the true value or beauty of Chattanooga. And we would love the opportunity to fix these issues through our revitalization of the block. We respectfully request the rezoning of two hundred Market Street from a DRA four, DSH six split zoning to a contiguous DCX six zoning. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
One quick question. Can you go over the reasoning behind the difference between the DSH and the DCX and why you chose DCX?
Yes, because right now, um, the first parcel right there, the part with the building is already zoned commercial, and we would like to have that be commercial as well, so that we can provide um, a mixed-use building that would ultimately um, benefit Chattanooga, but also because right now, we can't use it for what it's zoned for. It's only zoned residential, and we don't have the footage.
Right. I'm not, I'm not asking about the DRA four. I'm asking why move from DSH six to DCX six?
Oh, okay, yeah, because we're um doing office spaces for Cronus Capital. That's where we'll have our headquarter office.
Okay, I'm still not quite sure why DCX instead of DSH.
How are you? I'd just like to.
What's your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Dylan DeFreno, Representative Cronus Capital, uh, address six two three five Reveal Drive, Hickson, Tennessee. Um, uh, for that question, uh, the commercial, uh, commercial utilization of the space versus storefronts, um, uh, this current time and our pivotal, we've made such a pivotal moment, retracting our entire development, uh, giving us commercial gives us the ability to put more in there. Additionally, we're looking to put uh our office space in there as well for whatever development comes forth. Um, for the time being, we would be doing uh light rehabs to the building, so we can have a temporary office space as we go through engineering processes. Today, uh, discussing with you guys and the board is to see what our ability is and if we do even have the possibility of building on this lot. Currently, with the split zoning and the residential, we don't have any feasibility to build on that lot with the requirements. Commercial avoids that, allows us to put your board, allows us to put the office space in storage as well uh for our components of our business, and then incorporating small coffee shop, restaurant, things in the nature to the original developments in the middle that we have.
Okay, thank you.
You are.
Councilman Ludford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian. What time is it? So, point of clarification, the application that I'm looking at says rezone from DSH six and D R A four to DCX fourteen. But the document that I have in front of me now says from DA, DRA four, DSH six split to DCX six. What are we looking at?
Well, what you're looking at is what we provided you in the application. When they submit the application to us, it was what you see on the agenda.
Okay.
Sounds like today they're asking for something different.
I'm going to pivot. Ma'am, we have two different things we're looking at today.
Yes.
You just presented something entirely new to us.
Okay.
And what we have in front of us is a request for DCX fourteen.
Yes, sir.
That's what's on paper that we have on our agenda.
Yes, sir. Um, so actually, we were thinking that we saw the staff recommendation that came out as deny. So we were trying to show you guys that we were very serious about still developing. Um, and so that was why we brought today um the amended request zoning to switch it to DCX six zoning rather.
So let, let me, I don't know if this helps or not, but if we were to deny, which we have a DCX fourteen request, that's a nine-month waiting period before we can submit it. This is an entirely new plan. Has this new plan gone through any type of vetting or community or? We'll hear from, we'll hear from a representative on that, but this is an entirely new plan.
Okay.
And it's a little bit of a curveball for us.
Okay.
Uh, a motion to defer or even withdraw allows time to revisit your brand-new request.
Okay.
And I'm just throwing that out there as a friendly option.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I have one quick question for staff. Do, do y'all have a binder with the form-based code handy?
I do, and I have on the screen the differences. I know they'd come up on the, on the, on the forms. Here's all the setbacks. They're very similar on the first page here and setbacks. If you look for something specific, then if you look at the DCX, that gets in, that's where you see the height differences go up from D, DCSH. It's capped at eight stories. This case, it's six on this particular piece of property. DCX allows you to go up to twenty, but they're asking for six stories, which is allowed in DCX zone. Here's where you do some, see some differences between the DSH and DCX. The fenestration on the DSH, it's seventy percent for ground floor. It's required in DCX. Uh, blank wall length, it's twenty-foot max in DSH, and then thirty-foot max in DCX. Everything else stays the same. Setbacks are very similar. There's those changes, setbacks, terms of street planning types, et cetera. There are some differences in the uses. Uh, you can see those, I've got those highlighted in the red boxes between DCX and DSH. The DCH uh doesn't allow single unit uh attached, where the DCX does. Office uses are allowed in both zones. So I, I can go through all this if you want me to, but we have, I have it on the screen for you for something specific you're looking for.
No, no, this is very helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Uh, I, I'm looking here at what you handed to us today, which you also read, which is, we took the initiative to cancel the two twelve Market Street contract and began developing a new plan to use the two hundred Market Street property in a manner that will provide value to the Chattanooga community without unreasonably encumbering the Cherry Street neighbors' views, all while serving as a pilot project to build a foundation of trust between Cronus Capital and the city of Chattanooga. So my question is, when did you make the decision to do that?
Um, well, we had considered, obviously, we knew um the opposition of our Cherry Street neighbors, and we wanted nothing more than to have a very respectful relationship with those folks, but also when we saw the um committee's recommendation as well, which came out a few days ago.
Okay. Have you shared any of this information with anyone outside of your team except for this planning commission ten minutes ago? If one of the gentlemen is going to answer, you need to be at the podium and, and state your name, please. name, please.
Representative Cronos Capital. No, we have not shared this information with the Cherry Street residents that are at the side of the opposition for this project. With us making these pivotal changes last minute, we would still have to go through kind of a complete redesign process. As this board is probably aware, when we originally submitted, we submitted for 212 and 200. We were going through the engineering process of that building, the rendering process of that building. After one speaking with councilwoman and getting, going amongst the community, it was obvious that this building was very controversy. We do not want to be a controversy entity in the area. So retracting the 212 purchase was completed. We pulled out of that agreement because we did not see ourselves getting zoning approval and working with the community on it, also obstructing their views. It wasn't in the best nature for us to continue on with the project. 200 Market Street, we decided to continue on with that project process, but after, I'm sorry, my mouth is dry. After seeing the staff recommendation, it was apparent that building a high-rise in that area is not going to be recommended. We're eager to get into Chattanooga and to be able to have a headquarters office. Making a commercial gives us more abilities to do things in that lot, but we're trying to reduce our height. So with the application, we revoked the additional stories that we're asking for, and keeping it at what form-based code has already put that property at six stories. So we're just changing it to commercial use. That's it.
So I understand you've not shared this very nice professionally-bound packet that all of us have copies of now with Mr. Hitchcock and the opposition. Have you shared it with Councilwoman Dotley, who represents the area?
No, we, we made this change middle of last week, and then we prepared these documents. We like rushed to get them printed today based off the change, seeing if we can make amends to the board and show our good grace, and we're trying to back down from the development, be amongst the community members in a proper way. What we're asking for is, we're just asking to reduce the stories that our original application showed and have it just be a continuous of six.
I, I don't have another question at this time, Chairman, but, but just advice for the applicant. Showing us a secret plan that no one else has seen and you're doing it at the meeting is not the best way to do that.
No.
It wasn't a question? Thank you.
Mr. Payne?
Did you wanna say something?
So, question, question on the deferral, if we were to defer for 30 days and come back to the next meeting, and essentially, that would give us enough time to speak with the residents in the area about moving it to a commercial zone. And for another question, I was in, prior to this, we took the initiative going to, with Mrs. Dotley to set up a community meeting well before we were looking at the property. And this might be the correction on me, but I was under the impression after today's meeting, we have to have a community meeting with, with the townhome residents. If I have that backwards, that's my apologies, but we took the initiative prior, early stages to have a meeting, a community meeting, and then this is to show that we're willing to make the change. So no secrets here, anything.
Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So earlier, I had provided, I think, two respectful options. One was a deferral, one was the withdrawal. In my experience over the years in working through complex situations of this, I don't believe 30 days is going to cover the ground that you need to. I know that people think we are gonna jump into this, and they'll meet next week and everything will be happy, but a week goes by, two weeks goes by, and then we're right back to square one. So if you're thinking about a deferral, I would think longer than 30 days. The withdrawal option allows you to start from scratch because you have a new request and apparently a pretty detailed plan that needs to cover quite a few groups, including the ones led by Councilwoman Dotley. So those are, those are my points on, on the, on the two options that have been provided, I think, respectfully, are fair.
All right. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dotley? Hey, it was everybody else's fault that took so long.
Oh, that's all right.
I was trying to get to you.
That's okay. I'm here, I'm on the other side today, so that is fine with me. My name is Rakita Dotley, and I serve as the City Councilwoman for District 7, which includes our downtown. I'm here with our Cherry Street neighbors. Would you all stand, please, so we can show the support here for opposition? All right. Thank you all so much. You can have a seat, and I think a couple more may come up and speak. While I fully support economic growth and development, I believe it must be responsible and beneficial aligning with our city's overarching goals. The proposed project at 200 Market Street, which you all have covered thoroughly, and I greatly appreciate that, does not align with our vision for thriving downtown. Our urban core needs thoughtful, strategic development that stimulates economic growth while, while respecting our community's needs. Additionally, the project's design is not suitable for the location. We have form-based code for a reason. It's in place to ensure that the new developments enhance our city's character and urban landscape, even with the new request, which of course, if you, you've now seen, has not been discussed or shown to our community. So I stand in agreement with the planning commission's recommendation to deny the proposed 14-story development at 1400 Market Street. I do hope that they will go back through the process since they have a new plan, and today you are voting on this proposed 14, 14-story project that, that is denied, and they have to, just like everybody else, go through the process again so that we'll be able to see with the, meet with the Cherry Street neighbors, have a time, have time to deliberate and discuss with them what the proposed new development will be. So again, I stand with my Cherry Street neighbors in opposition to this project, and I urge you to uphold the planning commission's decision as well and reject his only requests and send them back like everybody else. Any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Hitchcock?
Mr. Anderson, are you gonna make a motion?
I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion once, if there are any other opposition speakers, I'll let them go first.
Okay.
But after that.
Thank you.
I hesitate to interrupt the flow, but I would like to make just a couple of points. I think the point has been made that this very well, that we had no notice of this suggestion. I would point out, the map that is up there right now shows the, the RA4 zone adjacent to all of our townhomes and across from the Walnut Hill townhomes. All of our lots are 25 feet wide. There may be a setback issue or setback variance that needs to be addressed, but there's no reason that two townhomes cannot be built on that lot under the present zone. And in fact, it was first recommended in 2016, when the form-based code was being considered, that that be the, the mixed-use six-story development. We asked that it be, that it be zoned to the RA4 to maintain the character of a unique street, and Cherry Street is a unique street, well, with, with townhomes up and down that. As to the procedural issue, we strongly request that you deny it, and that if they want to start over again using the appropriate procedure, give the neighborhood an opportunity to have comments on the process, give them an opportunity to meet with the neighbors if they wish to go forward, and give the staff an opportunity to review proper, an application in proper form. And it will take every bit of the nine months to go through that process if they wish to go forward with the process of this nature. So we ask that you deny it. Charlie Aran is here, along, Helen Sharp Burns, and they had some brief comments. We'll try our best not to bury votes.
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe we got this gentleman's...
Thank you, Rick.
...name and address.
I'm here to speak for the homeowners association, Cherry Street.
Sorry, I felt I didn't follow the... I apologize. I'm Rick Hitchcock. I live at 271 Cherry Street, about seven units down from this one.
And I'm Charlie Arant at 291 Cherry Street, and I'm representing the Townhome Homeowners Association, and I would just say, we, we love living downtown. We're all for downtown development done in a proper, planned way, and so we're, we support an awful lot of things. We've been supportive of the form-based code, and we would just encourage that this particular proposal be denied. It'd be very nice in other parts of downtown, but not where it's being proposed. So thank you for your consideration, and we appreciate your, your denial of this.
I'm Helen Burn Sharp. I live at 129 Walnut Street. I'm president of the Downtown Owners Collective, the Neighborhood Association for Downtown. I live in the neighborhood of where this rezon is proposed, and my comments will relate to what is before you today, which is the change to the 12-story. As you have heard from previous speakers, from a neighborhood perspective, this is the wrong lo, well, you would have if we'd gone into detail on it, the wrong location for the proposed building. But this is much more than a neighborhood issue. This request raises fundamental questions about sound planning and design principles. Downtown zoning received a much-needed overhaul a few years ago when the city council adopted a form-based code. The city paid a consulting firm in Austin, Texas, about $300,000 to write the code and prepare the zoning map. Up until that point, our zoning was C3, otherwise known as the Wild West Zone. The new zoning thoughtfully and gradually raised the height limit as it stepped back from the Tennessee River. It honors the Tennessee Aquarium as the tall building in the riverfront district and considers compatibility with adjacent land uses. The current zoning establishes a maximum height of six stories in the 200 block of Market, and the current zoning now is four stories on Cherry Street. Height maximum on Market Street gradually increased from six to eight to 12 stories as you reach the downtown core. Zoning that allows 12-story buildings is also in place, as was pointed out, at the bend and near the new baseball stadium. I hope the developers find a site for their exciting 12-story, or now whatever this is, vision. 200 Market is not it. The tall building would stick out like a sore thumb or a, or stick up like a sore thumb. So we would request that you deny this request, and the idea, I think, is a good one, that they either withdraw, I think withdrawal is better than deferral because that would give them and the neighborhood an opportunity to start from scratch with whatever their proposal has turned out to be. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, before I make my motion, I want to say that any action we take today has to be ratified one way or another by the city council next month. My fellow commissioners, the applicant has already failed to appear at one scheduled neighborhood meeting that the councilwoman set up. My motion today is a motion to deny this request, not defer, in the hopes that that denial and the clock ticking between now and the next city council meeting will bring them to the table to meet with the neighborhood and the elected representative. So my motion is to deny this request.
We have a motion, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Payne?
Given what we've just said, do the, if we deny, can they at the city council, would they have the option to withdraw so that the clock would not go to nine months? If they could work an agreement with the neighborhood or with the community, would they be able to do it faster than nine months with a withdrawal? If we deny, they can still withdraw before city council?
I believe they can do it for another two weeks. Is that right?
They, they can, they can, yeah. And, and, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify for rules and procedures, the applicant needs to be provided two minutes rebuttal.
Fair enough. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to say that we actually did have a team member from Cronos Capital go to the community meeting with the Cherry Street neighbors months ago. Also, we only want to do this the right way. We very much respect our Cherry Street neighbors, and we're just respectfully requesting that maybe your guidance to kind of, we want to do this the right way. So however we need to go about that, we're very much willing. I apologize, we did not mean to come across as secretive or anything like that. To be completely honest, we kind of just thought because it was already zoned six, it wouldn't really be that much of a detriment, but we also plan to follow form-based code as far as keeping with the continuity and the character of that area. That's also very important to us. We're Chattanoogaans as well, and the aquarium and all of that is very important to us. And I can assure you, what we have planned would be beautiful, but if we could either figure out maybe a way to defer or whatever your guidance would be, obviously withdrawing and waiting nine months wouldn't be ideal for anyone, but we would really like to know the best way to go about this.
Are you asking for it to be deferred based on what you've heard? And there's a motion, and it has been seconded, but are you asking for us to defer it?
Well, I'm asking, would it be better to defer? Is the deferral, is that gonna be a nine-month wait, or is that only the withdrawal?
No, I think if, if the nine months was being driven by a denial, if it were to be denied at city council...
Correct. If it's denied at city council, if this action is denied at city council, you cannot reapply for nine months.
Okay.
The deferral can be set by this body, whether it's 60 days, 90 days, whatever this body chooses.
Okay, I think a deferral would, if we could request a deferral.
You certainly can.
Okay.
Thank you. We do have a motion on the floor. It has been properly seconded. I am hesitating, but it is not at all uncommon for us to defer cases where an applicant is having problems with the neighborhood and, and city council and trying to, trying to figure out how properties get rezoned in Chattanooga and, you know, if I were telling an applicant that they were, that you're, you're gonna apply for a rezoning in Chattanooga, watch planning commission meetings so that you actually know how to do it, because a lot of these problems could have, I think, been really easily avoided, which is what you've heard here today. Had, had you just watched a handful of planning commission meetings prior to applying, it probably could have been avoided. So the applicant's requesting a deferral. I don't know that I see any harm in that. It's, it's pretty commonly done, some 60 days to work with the neighborhood. They've also modified their request even coming into today's meeting, so with that, I'll turn it over for a vote. Any other comments?
I'll just stay and say it is.
Regarding the motion on the floor, I'll be voting no, with the hopes that what has happened today will inspire Cronos to pick up the pace a little bit and get these issues resolved sooner rather than waiting for a city council meeting, which is about a month It just seems like an additional waiting period that could be avoided, so I'm more in favor of a, of a deferral rather than deny. Just want that on the record.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Payne?
So, Mr. Clear, yes vote would be for denial.
Yes.
Yeah, because right down the motion is, if Chairman correct me, I think the motion is to either to deny. You're voting to deny.
Yes.
Six to four. Six yes, four noes.
Motion carries. All right, thank y'all. Your motion was denied, or I'm sorry, the motion was approved, your application was denied.
This will move on next month to city council. Rattles? Yes, before council takes action. This will move on next month, the city council. Yes, before council takes action.
All right, next case on the agenda is case, it's item six, it's case 2025-0022, and this is located at 1100 Leupton Drive. Staff has recommended to approve an applicant's request to rezone from R N-3 and CMU1 to R N-1-6. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case is item seven, case 2025-0023, and this is also at 1100 Leupton Drive, and it's an application for a planned unit development amendment, and staff has recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? Do you have any questions or concerns regarding the conditions? Thank you. We have a motion to approve the staff recommendation, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda is item eight, case 2025-0024, and this is located at 2000 Holly Street. Staff has recommended to approve an application for a permit for a single wide manufactured home. Is there any opposition present? And is the applicant present? Thank you. Mr. Schultz?
Yes, this is a special exceptions permit for a single wide. It's not a rezoning case. The property's already zoned day one. It's roughly half an acre or less. It's one unit. It's a density of 2.12 dwelling units per acre. There's been no zoning history in this particular piece of property. There is some, to the south of this site, you can see the crosshatched area. That has been other special permits for single wides, so there is a precedent for single wides in this area. Here's a view of the site. It's a, contains an existing single-family dwelling. They intend to tear that dwelling down and replace it with a single wide. To the north, south, and west of this property is a single unit residential. There is a cemetery further south of this property, but the use of a single wide would be compatible with adjacent land uses. Here's a view of the site. This is the structure that will be removed. Another view of that site. Here's a view of the site plan submitted with the request. You can see where the single wide will be placed on the property. This request is compatible with the adopted land use plan. Adjacent land uses, developmental form of the area. There are other special permits for single wides in this area, so staff recommend to approve this special permit.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions for staff? All right, we'll hear from the applicant first. The applicant?
Good afternoon. Richard Lewis. I live at 348 Mapleton Drive, Cleveland, Tennessee. Thank you for your time. Words are simple. It's a multi-generational property. If you could bring the overhead back up, please. The land immediately to the east and also to the west is actually family. My cousins live in those houses, and I have family spread all across the single mountain. So, my father lived here for decades at this property. It was deeded to me. However, this was his property. We considered it his. My sister, Kimberly, right there, was his caretaker until he died two months ago today. It was his wish and his will that this lot be given to my sister. That will happen. His estate was modest. However, with the funds from that estate, plus me putting in funds of my own, we originally wanted to put a double wide, but we just can't afford it. So, we're asking for a single wide, permission to put a single wide, and we do want brand-new. We're not doing used. It's brand-new. It's from Clayton Homes. We've already picked it out. It's a 56-footer, and we can afford it. Again, we can afford a double wide, which is what we really wanted, but I'm asking that because of other permits in the area have been approved, that this can be approved. If you could bring up the pictures of the existing structure, please. The house was built many decades ago, and it was not maintained properly. My father was elderly and sick. He did not properly maintain the house. My sister currently has no other place to live, and she would like to reside on this property. So, I'd like to raise that structure and again, put the single wide. But again, I can't afford to put a double wide, so that's why I asked for the permit, and I'm asking for your grace in this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. If you'd like to speak, you're welcome. Come up.
Jason Smith. I live at 2210 Holly Street, but I also own 2203, 2204, 2216, and 2220 on Holly Street, as well as 2233 on Laurel Street. So, I own six different properties in that area. And the initial, I'm not going to go by what I initially wrote, but the precedent has always been that when I bought these properties back in the late 90s, early 2000s, is everyone knew you could not put a single wide mobile home. Now, technically, double wide mobile homes are allowed, and nobody's made the request to have that banned in the area to date. And I'm not doing that. What our concern is, although I think the whole neighborhood would agree that that home does need to be replaced, and we assumed it would be eventually, and that's what they're doing, but we were hoping that they would go by the existing, whatever the codes are at the moment, that would allow at least a double wide instead of a single wide, primarily because when you, every single wide home that is added to that area, it does decrease the property values for the other homes. There's no question about that. And it's just a matter of, based on what you were saying, none of that I was aware of until just now. But, from an optical standpoint, it'll probably definitely look better than what's existing that's already there at the moment. But, we were hoping that the concern with allowing another single wide mobile home in the area is it creates a precedent. It's going to allow more and more possibly down the line, because there's a lot of property in that area where homes have not been built as of yet. And the hope is that, well, basically, that's all we're stating, that we should just be going by the existing regulations already, and go from there.
Thank you. Mr. Burn? We have a motion to approve. Multiple seconds. Any discussion?
I do want to say that, you know, I do believe that, given the housing situation that we're facing right now, this will probably not be the last time, and we may need to examine the idea that we just summarily dismiss single wides or anything as a housing option right now is something we need to really be thinking about. We've got, I would call it a housing crisis right now, and I really think we need to be open to the idea of multiple types of housing.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. I kept hearing yeses up here, and lots of nodding heads. Councilman Ledford?
You're seeing that, Chairman, because, Mr. Lewis, first of all, my sympathies for your loss to your father. I too have an elderly father who's living in a house that we are desperately trying to maintain. So, I hear you, brother. I hear you. And to your sister, Commissioner Payne is 100% correct. We are in a horrible situation with the cost of housing, and I believe that being able to take care of your family and honor your father's wishes is just the right thing to do. And so, I think that's why you're seeing so many nods of yeses up here today. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just as for the opposition and the applicant while they're here, this special permit, yes, it is approved by this body, but the applicant, I mean, the opposition can appeal this decision to county commission. They have to let us, the RPA, know in seven days of today's decision to appeal it, to county commission if they so choose.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda, item nine, is case 2025-0026. This is located at 2401 East Payne Street. Staff has recommended to approve an applicant's request to rezone from CC to CTMU. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10 on our agenda, case 2025-0027, is located at 8875 Hickson Pike, and it is an application for residential planned unit development. Staff has recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? If you hear an opposition. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we did receive, I think, this applicant, I mean, opposition is in front of you on your Google sheet. There is somebody else who's sent in opposition to this.
Great, thank you. Come on up. Let's, if you don't mind, state your name and address for the record, and before we hear any staff report on it, let's hear your concern.
And let me clearly state, I'm not here in opposition. It's a sign of healthy growth in the county. It's the nature of where we're at, but with...
Did I?
You did not miss that. No. Wayne Baylough, Lakeside, Illinois.
Thank you.
Illinois, Tennessee. But with the nature of the growth, we also have nature, natural impacts on the infrastructure, not being traffic here. So, my concern, and I represent a number of residents from there and further north on Hickson Pike, I want to kind of create your awareness of what the intersection is there and how this can impact a safety situation that's there and make it worse. This is where Hickson Pike goes from five lanes down to two lanes up in Lakeside. So, this development is at the top of the first hill as you go up Hickson, and it'll be just off to the left. So, it's kind of a gauntlet right now where traffic comes through. We phase it down from two lanes, and people try to, you know, one-up smooth ship and get in front as you go uphill. This development, you know, if we say each home has a one-and-a-half drivers, so we're going to have another 60 potential residents that may want to stop and turn left there. So, the visibility is bad at this, on the crest of this hill. It's bad from this direction and from the other direction. And it's a two-lane. It's two lanes, all sides. TDOT has recognized it as limited visibility. There's been several accidents along this hilly, curvy area. I'm just asking that you guys help create some awareness of the traffic situation here, and as this moves forward, help look at this from a safety perspective, so that we don't have a lot of people trying to turn at the top of this hill where you've got people speeding to get through the two-to-one lane, and now we've got to suddenly stop, because there's two other developments to the right that people will turn into that exist now. This is an evacuation route. Hickson Pike is an evacuation route from Sequoia. Traffic is ever-increasing going north on Hickson Pike. You know, it's going to, eventually Hickson Pike will be widened to five lanes there. You know, it's kind of in the long-term TDOT plans. But, the cumulative effect of this development being 200, about 250 feet off of the intersection of Hickson and Nelson for Dalton, is just going to add more traffic and more reasons to stop at the top of this hill. So, I don't know what the solution is. I'm just saying, maybe look at it as adding a turn lane, or add that turn lane down to where it goes from five down to two. Maybe a light, a flashing yellow, a flashing red. I don't know what. I'm just asking for your help in how to look at this. So, I do have some handouts. I only had four. I have some visuals in there. If you can scan that and put that in your things, because I only know you've got some comments on a spreadsheet.
Thank you. Any questions?
Can I ask the staff a question? Brian, this is already zoned R1?
That's correct.
So, how many, how many structures by right are they already allowed to build?
I was just figuring that out on gross. I just got by right, 139. That number's going to be well below that, time you put in roads and stuff. I don't know the exact number. Maybe the applicant can speak to what that would look like, but it'd be...
But theoretically, they can already put this many houses or more without even coming before us, theoretically.
Yeah, theoretically.
So, really, all we're talking about is the, is the plan for the community and how it looks.
Yeah.
And one thing I would just, I appreciate your sentiment, and I definitely appreciate the nuance that you're, that you're talking with as you talk about this, because, you know, a lot of people that come up and oppose development just don't want it built.
Right.
And I just want the community to recognize that we can't stop them from building this many houses. All we're talking about is the plan.
Right.
So, and I will say, the developer has already, they've already tried to put the denser part of their development towards the middle, which is better than it could be. And so, you know, as we talk through this, just, I want the community to recognize, they can already put a lot more houses on this piece of property than they're showing. And I can, I can tell you that we'll, we'll definitely look at this intersection as a part of our long-term planning on roads. We've got several projects in the area that we're looking at already, and we can add this to the list.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Thank you. And here the applicant. Yes, go ahead.
Derek Blackwood, MIP Engineers, 7380 Applegate Lane. I think, just to add to this, the county during the land disturbance permit review and preliminary plat process typically requires subdivisions over about 50 lots to conduct a traffic study. So, we fully anticipate having to do that traffic study and adhere to recommendations that traffic engineers put forth. So...
Thank you.
Point of note.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on our agenda is item 11. It's case 2025-0028, and it is an unaddressed, located at an unaddressed property at the 5200 block of Hunter Village Drive, and staff has recommended to approve with conditions an applicant's request for rezoning from R1, single-family district to M1 with conditions. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? And regarding the conditions, any comments? One. Thank you.
Derek Blackwood, MIP Engineers. Again, the only comment I would have is regarding, we're fine with the conditions except for number three. The area in question is within a, an EPB easement, so we would not be allowed to plant tall evergreen trees within that easement. There's some topography to deal with, basically. The slope, slopes down from a higher, the residential subdivision adjacent is higher in elevation by upwards of 20 feet. We could plant some shrubs, but I don't think that would do any good from a screening standpoint. We are leaving 50 feet between the residential zone and our use as undisturbed. So, really, I'm not quite certain that a buffer would do any, add any benefit to the neighbors. So, the, we're leaving a 50-foot strip, zoned R1, basically, is what, yes, sir. So, we're zoning just a small portion of that particular parcel to the M1 zone, leaving the rest as R1.
Any questions for the applicant? Is there any opposition present?
All right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with removing condition number three, given the information about 50 foot already left.
Thank you. We have a motion. It has been seconded. It was to approve with the two cond- two conditions and striking three. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12 on our agenda is case 2025-0029 and this is located at 1824 Crabtree Road and staff is recommended to approve an application of rezone from R3 to A1. Is there any opposition present? You're hearing opposition? Okay. Is the applicant present? All right. Thank you. Why don't we hear those questions first?
And actually, there's three cases to go with this piece of property, 45 and 30.
Thank you.
Todd Cooper, 7767 Lindley Way. Really, I, I'm not opposed. The airport doesn't bother us being there, but they're going from R3 to A1 and I don't know, they're talking about condominiums or townhomes and hangars. And the part behind Lindley Way, if you go, if you pull up your map, Lindley Way, which is the R1, next to the R3, they're changing R3 to A1, I guess, to get their hangars in. Is there a reason they would do that? In agriculture, I guess, can you have aircraft hangars?
You came with a special permit. That's why there's three cases.
So that's why they're taking the R3 out of it. That's all wetlands behind our house. I know they've done delineation tests. They're doing it now. We had an engineer out last week to look at it, which from Lit Creek, which is a Blue Line Creek, this is next to the, the runway now, all the way over to Lindley Way is the R1 in the yellow off of Thrasher Pike. We just, we'd like to see some kind of plan of what they're doing. Before, they had a plan 15 years ago that we saw and it had townhomes all the way behind the subdivision and which it's all wetland area, you know, that I know in, when they did with the sweat permit and all that, I know they have to study that, but I guess rezoning this, we'd like to kind of see what are they doing? Because this is all residential single-family homes. There are no townhomes anywhere near this.
Mr. Chairman, I can probably clarify. Yeah, last year, there was a request to take this, what you're seeing on the screen in front of you, which is R3. Last year, that property, actually maybe two years ago, I'm not sure now, it was zoned A1. They rezoned it to R3 with the intention of putting townhomes in that R3 portion. Now they're not doing that. They won't go back, put it to A1, what it was prior to last year, the year before last. And as part of that, instead of building townhomes, it would now be built with hangars for the airport. Then last year, it also received a special permit for airport with a lot of different uses in that. They've now backed off those uses and just strictly using it as airport, a landing strip. So they're abandoning that special permit and putting a new special permit in place in this R3, which would be an extension. And I'll be, I can go through all the cases if you want me to. That's just a really quick overview to help this.
So they're not building the hangars and townhomes now?
The applicant can speak that. My understanding, they're not building the townhomes. They may be building hangars for the airport.
So that'd be another question we would have as a residential neighborhood, have metal buildings all behind our houses, all the way down through, through here. That would be an issue. I'd just like somebody to talk to us because we've been dealing with two, three different people we've heard over the last 15 years and we have no plans other than just hearsay. And it's kind of nice, like you had the guy earlier that they should have withdrawn it. Well, I've developed four subdivisions Chattanooga and two industrial parks. I've been in business since 1985 and you have to talk early to people so that everybody knows and understands what you're trying to do to better the community. You know, when you don't talk to people, that's when you have issues like this and like they have. And I just, I think we need to talk with the applicant. They're not even here. Oh, they are? Okay. So I'd love to talk. I'm not opposed to it. I just would like to know kind of what are we doing?
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to go through the presentation?
No, I think we now know, but I'd like to, yes, sir. Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yes. Thank you. So in regards to item 12 on our agenda, 13 and 14, yes. Mr. Schultz, you can go through this.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead and run through those.
Yeah, this first one is 2025-29. This is a request again to rezone this R3, portions R3 to A1. It's 32 acres in size. You look at this, on the zoning map, you see it's A1 to the north and south, R1 as well. But it was really a stretch last year to put R3 at this location. But most again, it's only, it's zoned A1 and R1. As I stated before, in 2023, this property was rezoned to R3. Again, it was A1 and R2A. Also in 2023, just to north this property, it received a special permit for the airstrip. This rezoning had six conditions on it. Those six conditions are single-unit detached dwelling and townhouses can be developed under HPR. Townhomes are only allowed between existing landing strip and a north parcel line. It has that parcel line ID listed. Multifamily residential complexes are prohibited. Had a max density of two units per acre. Condition number five is related to a top B landscape buffer. Then number six, all garage slash roll-up doors facing the landing strip. He goes on to prohibit those parcels there. So here's the aerial view. You can see the landing strip. That landing strip's been there since the 50s. This is the vacant piece of property now. Again, they originally proposed to put townhomes with a really large garage for the airplanes. That's not wrong with the plan. They wish to go back, just to put it back to A1. Here's a view of the site, the actual airport landing strip. Another view of the site. This is a view of the site. You can see some of the hangars in the background. This is Crabtree Road. This is southeast of the site, which is the single-family dwellings. This is west of the site. This is the previous site plan submitted back in 2023. You can see the airport landing strip to the north. This triangle piece of property that had originally been zoned A1, that was rezoned to R3 for townhomes. That's not part of this request. That will remain R3. This area here with a red dot, that's what we're talking about today. Again, these were townhome units with a garage for airport, I mean, for airplanes. They're now wishing to not do that. We go back to strictly hangars. Here's the site plan submitted with that request. Here's the area in question. Again, staff recommends to approve this request because it was previously zoned A1. The site is surrounded by vacant land. It's also surrounded by single-unit residential, multifamily residential, also a public park. It's currently been used as an airport since the 50s and 60s. So putting this back to A1 seems like an appropriate request. Next case is 45. This area in the red is where they received the special permit for the airport landing strip, which is required in A1 zone. That special permit was approved by county commission with six conditions. Airport traffic control towers or other towers are prohibited. Hangar space limited to the existing square footage as shown on the site plan submitted in 2023. No expansion of the existing landing strip is permitted. On-demand radio-activated runway lighting to be used as needed only. And number five on their plan, they had a lot of uses they wanted to do such as landings, private hangar space, self-service refueling, amenity spaces, a small format general store, a GM, clubhouse, office, a cafe, a pilot training building, and radio-related facilities. All those were in that potential landing strip area. And finally, condition number six, the airport and accessory uses shall operate for private members only. So that was existing conditions with that special permit. They're no longer doing that as proposed in 2023. They want to abandon that special permit. So that's what 45 is doing. Staff recommends to approve this abandonment of this special permit at this location. And then case number 30 is to apply a new special permit for landing strip, which incorporates what was previously approved two years ago and add this R3 as part of it. And so staff recommends to approve the new special permit with six conditions. Let me get to those. Here's the new conditions. Airport traffic control towers or other towers are prohibited. Hangar space limited to the existing square footage as shown on the site plan. No expansion of the existing land race strip is permitted. On-demand radio-activated runway lighting to be used as needed only. And uses limited to takeoffs, landings, private hangar space, self-service refueling, pilot training building, and radio-related facilities. So there is a little few differences in the conditions. So at the end of the day, we're getting back to sort of what it was prior to 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions for staff? All right, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. This is Mark Litchford here on behalf of the applicant Stillport. This is property off of Crabtree Road. We were here a couple of years ago. This is essentially effectuating and downzoning so that the construction of the hangars can occur. We've got existing hangars out there that are currently going under renovation. And now what we'll have is the ability, basically to expand for the hangars, which originally were going to be larger than the townhomes. Where here was presented with townhomes with the hangars underneath. This will now just be nice, higher-end hangars for the area. And that, that's really what I assume is we're effectuating with respect to expansion of the, going back to the A1, downzoned A1, and then modifying what will be the special use permit under application 0030. The conditions we do have a question on really is, we're dealing with airstrips and it's a T-Dot regulated one. This is not in the conditions here, but identified as private hangar space, I mean, this will be leased hangar spaces. I want to make sure there's not a misunderstanding that when it says private, that it would just be for the property only. It'd be for what he's leasing out, people with private airplanes that are coming in. That's what would have been effectuated under the existing as we have it, albeit there would have been people with homes that would have had those to fly in and park underneath it. So I'm not aware of any other, of any opposition. We had a meeting last, whenever this first came about, a year and a half ago, we had a large meeting out there with this one being a downzone. We're certainly willing to answer any questions that people might have on this.
Mr. Genway.
Have you talked to Commissioner Smith about this new plan at all? Has he voiced support or how did that go? Because my only question is if you go back to the original conditions, you know, one of the conditions that, that county commission set was no expansion of, of hangar space. And so, and now that's what we're doing. So I, I guess that, that's my only question is- Right. I guess I just have a concern that, that the original intent may have been no expansion of hangar space and now we're, that's, that's exactly what we'd be doing by approving this. I don't know. I don't know if anybody else has other thoughts.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. So the recent proposal, the, sorry, the previous proposal was townhomes over hangars. Right. Okay, so the previous proposal was always to add additional hangars. So Genway had a, was confused about that. I just want to clear that up. So I don't think we're being asked to do anything different other than less. They're not asking for anything other than less.
Got our questions for the applicant. All right. What's the will of the commission in regards to case 2025-0029?
I move to approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, can staff, maybe to the petitioner there, they made the motion. Should we clarify that private hangar space is private slash leased hangar space or y'all comfortable with it's written now?
Yeah, I'd, I'd be fine with that if you think it will alleviate any kind of discrepancies in the verbiage there. So I'll change my motion to approve with the additional language in there with private and leased.
We have an amended motion and, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And 13 on our agenda, which is case 2025-0045. What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 14 on our agenda, case 2025-0030, located, well, y'all know where it's located. What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Yes.
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 29 doesn't have any conditions, condition, it would have been straightforward approval. I think what we were talking about was the condition on this case here.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. 30.
We have a motion. It has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 15 is a mandatory referral. It's case 2025-0025. Staff is recommended to approve public street closure and abandonment at the 2200 block of East 21st Street. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Anderson for just a moment.
All right. Next up, we have case 2025-0033. Is the applicant present? Is there any opposition present? I have a motion that's been properly seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to case 2025-0035. The applicant's present. Is there any opposition? What's the will of the commission? I have a motion that's been properly seconded. Any discussion? Nope. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Both pass.
Mr. Chairman, this case has been, I think, deferred for 30 days. I don't think we took action on it though earlier.
Are you speaking about MR 2025-0031?
Yes.
I'm going to turn things back over to the chairman for 2020. Okay. Okay, I have a motion to defer 30 days. That's been properly seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Next item on our agenda is item two under government mandatory referrals. It's mandatory referral 2025-0018. And it's recommended by staff for approval for declaring surplus property at the 600 block of Georgia Avenue. Is there any opposition present?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And item three, case 2025-0032, recommended for approval is declaring surplus property at the 1600 block of Melanie Street and the 1500 block of Citico Avenue. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That's why you wanted me to stay gone. Now I know.
No, I, I didn't say that.
I heard Chris say it. He said, stay gone. I heard it. I, I wish I could make it. Can I make a motion?
You're the chairman.
And in regards to the resolution amendment, a resolution to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part Two, Chapter 38, Chattanooga zoning regulations, to amend various sections in the new Chapter 38, Chattanooga zoning regulations adopted by ordinance number 14137 on July 23rd, 2024. Is there any opposition present? I'd make a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for that. I think it looks great. Staff update. Uh, staff updates?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just say that, uh, we have an incredible staff, very proud of the work that we've got done the last couple of years. And, uh, I owe it all to them, uh, have nothing else to offer.
We do have a time on our agenda for public comment on non-agenda items, is there any? Wyatt? Nothing? All right. Oh.
Good afternoon, um, my name is Grace Minett, I live at one four five eight Palisades Road. I guess at first, I just wanted to thank Mr. Janeway, um, and the two to three others that on item four attempted to hold the planning commission accountable, um, to only approve final plats, uh, that have met all requirements completed at the time of the hearing, so I appreciate that. Um, I guess the reason why I mention, um, two or three others is because I'm uncertain of how many others actually voted um, in favor of that accountability, um, because the majority of the microphones are not on. Um, I would respectfully request that when the commissioners enter the room and start the meeting, the microphones are turned on so that we can hear all of the comments that are made, the motions and the seconds, um, for the transparency to the public and to the recording for the sake of documentation. Uh, there is a lot that goes unheard that transpires during this meeting, um, that the public does not hear while either listening to live stream or listening to the recording afterward. And for the sake of clarity, to the minutes that are recorded, um, in written form, I do believe that microphones would be better to be left on than to be turned on each time a comment is made. And, um, the other, uh, thing that I would like to mention, um, about that action that took place, I believe there was another action that involved a roll call, um, during this meeting. It's my understanding that roll calls actually involve calling a roll, which does mean stating individual names of the commissioners and waiting for a response. That way, the clarity of the decision by the commissioner is put clearly into the record for no means of interpretation later, or having to watch a video that may not also have that audio. Um, it would, uh, very much benefit the staff that are, um, working very hard to document the decisions that you make, um, and to appreciate the time that you offer as commissioners to be here. And I think that that just needs to be respectfully done, um, on, on both sides, uh, with regards to, um, the public engagement and the documentation of your time on this commission, for which I thank you for doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get approval of the planning convention minutes of January twenty-seventh?
Second. Move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. And it has been properly seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Payne?
I would move to adjourn.
Thank you.